So, good evening fellow councillors to the town council finance committee meeting being held here in King's House on Tuesday 19th of July and we're starting just a moment after six o'clock. We'll go straight into the first item on the agenda which is declarations of any discloseable pecuniary interests to receive any additional interest not already registered. Obviously if anything should come up in the course of the conversations please do feel free to indicate. We then move on to apologies for absence and we have a full house by the looks of it. Thank you very much and thank you all for taking the time to come out on this rather balmy day. There's a positive bit of management. So when we can move on to confirm the minutes of the committee meeting held on the 24th of May which were received by full council on the 31st of May as a true record and to be signed and initialled by the chairperson. Page by page, page one, page two and page three. Are we happy that they're a true and fair reflection team? Super, I'll sign those. And then we move on to the contracts update to note the attachment to the contracts that we've received. There were three on there. Any questions, queries or comments please team on that one. All happy? In that case we will move on to committee financial decisions to note the attached schedule of financial decisions. Ultimately there are just two committees decisions there. Any questions, queries or points for clarification please? Apart from the August 21 time travel issue which will obviously be amended. Suffice just to note those. We then move on to the approval of payments. So these have been circulated in advance to receive and approve the attached listings of payments made since the last meeting. That's not recommend approval to full council, is it? Terms of reference do allow us to approve these. So the recommendation is making these payments be approved by this committee. Everybody happy? Okay. Should have a secondary, shouldn't I? Could I have a proposal please? Thank you Barbara. Could I have a second please? Thank you Chris. All those in favour? Super unanimous. Apologies Karen. So on to agenda item 21 for the financial report for the three months ended 30th of June. As always Alan has done his amazing report to us. These again have been circulated in advance. I would highlight to you the income for the three months ended 30th of June is slightly lower than the budgeted. The majority of the variance is within the cemetery which has been investigated further to understand why. And then our significant variances in expenditure and as per usual you'll see that Alan has annotated the detailed income and expenditure report for you. Are there any questions or queries please?
Is it pest control for me allotments? Is it just rats or is it any other?
It's just rats.
Are they more prevalent this year or?
What happens is, what happened is in 1920, sorry 2021, the pest control, we paid for a pest control contract, they weren't able to do it. So what they did is they gave us free pest control last year. Now we've had to pay for it, it's actually coming through. And because it stepped off the budgetable but it wasn't actually budgeted adequately.
I just wanted to get those on your hands.
So it's just domain sites. We don't do it at the smaller sites. It's only in Bath Road and Berry Road.
Any further questions please on that? Yes councillor Harvey?
Just curious, I know we've got to look at the cemetery lot, that's fair enough, isn't it? No clue? Is it, do they want to sign to do the moving and stuff about?
Sorry, your variances, your concerns what? Sorry, I didn't catch it.
With the cemetery, the difference.
The income difference. So obviously that is further being investigated. Have you got any update on that at the moment?
Unfortunately the cemetery's personnel who started for billing is on leave, has actually been on leave for the last two weeks. So I still have the answers but I am concerned what sometimes happens is that the invoices will be raised but not actually finalised and put into the system. So when they get raised they sit in kind of suspense and it's only when they get approved. So I'm hoping that it is due to that. But it's just very strange. So bearing in mind that we normally run, we have a capacity challenge within the cemetery. So by December, at the end of the last few months, we normally sometimes have to go to the cemetery. We can't do any more alternatives because it's full of capacity. So I'm very mystified and I can't find the answers. I will report back at the next meeting.
Alternatively it could be that the parishioners are fed on and on ad-hati at the moment and are positively above ground.
Can I ask one more? Overspends on allotments. We put some money back into reserves.
I think what happens is during the year, we don't do, add more funding to reporting. So what happens is that if there's, for example, take the pest control, the pest control contract gets paid, we will value it at year end. So then, and then that portion that relates to other periods will be put on the balance sheet and then reversed out. So that is part of what was, that's what happened last year and it's actually inverted to this year. But we have set aside money reserves, we put aside one or two thousand pounds every year into the cemetery's reserve and that will continue. But this is a timing issue. We've never been able to, at the end of each month, I don't need all our expenditure. So there's a pre-payment element of it. We just don't have the capacity within the finance department to do that.
On any other questions please? The significant line on income on 4103 property rental areas, is that something we should be concerned about or is that just an accounting function that is made similar to like a amount for bad debt as it were?
Why we created that line was last year, if you remember, some of our rental, property rental debtors asked if they could defer the payment of their rent and they would pay us interest. So what we did is we separated that out so that we could keep track of that. So we can make sure that they actually did pay all the areas rental. What we have is kind of is they haven't paid us any interest which they agreed to do in terms of their agreement. So we have to go back and have that found. There is one other property rental debtor which we have a challenge with and which we will, we haven't done the processes on our side in terms of invoicing them, which is invoicing them when they've paid, they've short paid. We have to go back and invoice them for all amounts and sit down and have a discussion. And I've briefed the chair and this will be put into the next meeting agenda to bring to this committee's attention because we might have to make some. Not implying that. All other decisions are small.
And then the merril income, that looks weird. Why does that look weird?
The merril income, what happens in the, oh yeah, ends in May but we run our finances until March. So obviously what they used to do, they used to go to May and then back that everything to March, which is actually incorrect from an accounting perspective. So what I've got to do, sit down with the former mayor, have a meeting, work out what the income related to him is and then what expenses are related to him. One goes to his merril fund and that will reverse out all this income. So it will reflect what the current mayor, our chairman, has received and spending rather than what the former mayor did. And what's happened is that if you remember there was a man's ball which the income was recognised in March, in the year March 2022 and some of the refunds took place a little bit later. So that has to be tidied up and put back into the merril fund. Those entries I'm hoping to meet as May before the end of this month.
Any further questions, queries or comments on the accounts please? In that case do I have a proposal for adopting those please? Thank you Dennis. Do I have a second? Thank you Chris. All those in favour? Super unanimous. We then move on to the next item which is financial and budget timetables to receive and review the financial timetable for the 2022-23 financial year as well as the budget timetable for preparing the 2023-24 budget. And the decision today is to approve these. The recommendation is that both the financial timetable and the budget timetable be approved by the finance committee. Again, you have been circulated these in advance. If there's anything you'd like to say on that before I move on. Over to you team.
I think now we'll come inside with the back things because that was one of the problems we had before. We were doing this at the right time at the back. So have we changed anything or are we still?
We do the Vats more accurately but there's still is that problem that if you go back, we haven't done our Vats correctly since 1974. So what we have to do is quantify that. I keep thinking that I've come up with a solution as how to deal with it in the accounting records. I then start implementing it in this guy. That is not the solution. But we have to, it's on the finance officer projects that has to be sorted out because you are actually getting fined for such a challenge.
You can see NXP is the budget timetable. So that's what we will be working to as a council if this committee agrees. And obviously all the other committees will be working towards that and we have some contingencies in case total bumfights break out over it.
As the office say, you're quite active with this timetable.
We use this as an amendments. Because what we did is we actually initially we got published the timetable too late. We published it in September but that is too late. So we brought it forward to July and then sit down with SMT and make sure that we actually adhere to it. It'll get better here. The one chance that we have quite is we've been doing rational term budgeting. So we say that we do have multi, you know, multi-term expenditure budgeted but we actually don't. It's really incremental from one year to the next. So this year in August we're having a management meeting to see how we can better get the budget reflected, you know, medium term framework so that it'll guide us going forward. Because we do have some financial challenges that we should be managing, you know, possibly the amenities, the open space contracts. We've got electricity contracts ending in September 2023 which could have significant impact on us. And there's all those things that we try to put into a document that makes sense and it will guide the longer term budgeting.
In fact, if you're happy that the timetable is there and we're looking at the pack, I'm quite prepared to propose that we set this down.
Thank you. Right, can I have a second on that one please? Thank you Barbara. All those in favour? That's unanimous again. So that's approved. So we move on to then the transparency code checklist. Obviously we've had some of the timetabling within that previous item. So transparency code checklist as attached and its A was approved at March 21 finance committee meeting and it showed the previous basis. We've now updated it for 2022-23 and this will be monitored and progress reported to the finance committee on a quarterly basis during this current financial year. I'll open the floor for discussion please.
If I could stop just in the next area, what I distributed the documentation is I put down, you'll see green and red and red being that we actually hadn't done it. And this morning I've had to go and apologise recently to the town clerk because Orbit One had actually been done. I just haven't found it on the website. So my knees are quite sore for begging for forgiveness, which I had to do. And I apologise for that. I haven't intended to mislead even this committee on that. The mistake that I've made is that I haven't put the years relating to it. So for example, when we talk about, just take grants to voluntary community and social enterprise organisations, we have put the grants for 21-22 on the websites. But that will only go into this current year's checklist. It won't go into last year's. So last year we did put, because in May, if you look at that one in May 2021, we wouldn't have had the document ready. It would be the previous one and I would have done it as I've muddled myself up by not putting periods there. So what I'd like to do, what I'm going to amend the one that's, if you approve an extra B, an extra is put which year I'll be putting and publishing the information. So it's a lot easier to do that. Otherwise I'm trying to tie myself up in knots because I'm trying to publish things that we had before the end of the year, before we even finalised it. So everything that is red has now on the website under the transparency code. And again, I do apologise for misleading you in distributing this information and I've done the town clerk a disservice.
Which one of the reds is still red?
None. It's of today, Opus Four. No, no, no. Orbit One. It was actually there. We had actually published senior salaries information for example. The only one that wasn't there was the pay multiple.
Right, so now we're clear.
Everything is all green. It's all green, yes.
I'm happy with it.
I'd suggest there's a level of irony and it's probably not wasted on some of our residents who just do listen back to this meeting, that the irony is, is that our own officer can't find the information where it was published, which highlights the need for the work that the communications team are doing on the web, on a new website. So yeah, there's a level of irony there but at least we're aware of it and it is in process. So that's something. So, any further questions on that one? In that case, the decision required is to approve the checklist. Do I have a proposal to approve that checklist please? Thank you councillor Harvey, Sandra, thank you councillor Crawford, all those in favour? Lovely, unanimous again. Thank you very much.
We've been very quiet. We didn't even kick it this year.
I did propose one. Last one. So we move on to the next item on the agenda which is a request by a tenant to terminate tenancy agreement. A tenant has approached the council, obviously through our property agent, to end their tenancy agreement by mutual consent as the business is in financial distress and is battling to pay its commercial property rent. And what I would say is I think it's fantastic that they've spoken to us at an early opportunity. We, the finance committee, are responsible for oversight on the leasing of council properties to commercial tenants and therefore this matter has come to this committee to consider. You've had the outline of the papers. Obviously what I would say is this tenant has come to us. It would not be either in the council's interest or the tenant's interest to continually enforce the terms of the agreement where it's clear that the tenant is no longer in that position. And actually, we have a duty of care to our tenants to support them when things have been difficult. And obviously we took decisions during the previous two years when we were approached by other tenants to do delaying and then potentially pay interest. Those are the terms that they came to us with and we agreed that we would apply those to all tenants. This particular tenant question has said it's not working. So in this specific instance, the council could reach agreement with the tenant by mutual consent to terminate the existing tenancy agreement on the proviso that, one, the tenant pays all outstanding rental up to the date of early termination of the lease agreement. Two, the termination date we mutually agreed that will be outside of the tenancy agreement but will prevent the tenant accumulating additional rent. So we try and safeguard there. And then three, the premises are left in a good condition by the tenant, obviously trying to safeguard ourselves. It's suggested that the committee considers this request to early termination taking these and any other factors into account. We also, there are two recommendations here that obviously we consider the request to terminate the existing tenancy by mutual consent on the conditions set out above in your paper. And then also the committee sets out the principle for inclusion in a policy framework so that we give the tools to our officers to do what we need them to do. And obviously it's about again, being fair and consistent with all of our tenants, not just the odd one and dealing with things individually. It's about setting a protocol that can be followed. I will open the floor for discussion unless there's anything you'd like to add. Over to you team. Yes Barbara?
The tenant's been very proactive in letting the council know the earliest opportunity that they aren't struggling. And I see no reason to, you know, to enforce the tenancy where, you know, they build up debt and, you know, somebody else would have the premises and we go renting rather than somebody that owes a lot, you know, some money at the end of the day. It's very sad. Sometimes, you know, it's a big leap when you're starting up a business and, you know, you don't, you know, put people off of trying by enforcing them to build up a debt. They might not be in a position to come in.
Chris?
Or for a deposit, I do have a question.
That would be within the terms of the lease. So I don't know. Probably. Normally standard is three months in advance, isn't it, as a deposit? So obviously there's that aspect as well if that is the case. But without knowing the terms of the lease itself. But yeah. Which would potentially be of assistance to that tenant as well? Yes, Brian?
Do we need to get anything in the paperwork and in these recommendations that says something along the lines of the policy of this council is to look at each thing as a one-off? By setting these recommendations, I'm a little bit concerned that that would mean that everybody that did this would automatically get it. And I think we ought to cover ourselves because, okay, this particular tenant has been proactive and done. But you can actually get some that work the other way. And looking at some of the tenants that we have, I wouldn't want it to be set as a precedent that if they just ask for early termination, they get it.
The early termination is done on the provisos that the tenant pays up all outstanding rental to the date of early termination. So that way the risk is minimised to this council. And the termination date is to be mutually agreed. And then the premise is left in a good condition. So I think actually we have a framework there that can be gone through should they come to us. Obviously then the other parts are discussion.
As long as we're not looking at it as a first point.
I don't, yeah, I think those provisos are the key aspects for a future policy framework. And if we were to make that decision today, we could set that precedent within that framework. Dennis, have you got anything you'd like to add?
No, not really. It's an unfortunate situation but I can't see anything Julian would do for us to try to hold him to a tenancy. So I think it's a mutually agreed thing. I think we should go ahead with it.
Absolutely. That's it for the tenant. But at the same time, we have to be pragmatic and say, well, if it's not working, let's actually be supportive of small business in more than one way.
Most small businesses fail within the first, you know, couple of years anyway. So I mean, it's a risk and we have to try to alleviate their risk and our risk as much as we can. We're doing that.
Councillor Harvey? Yeah. So in that case, the recommendation is that the committee consider the request to terminate the existing tenancy by mutual consent on the conditions set out above which are, one, the tenant pays all outstanding rental up to the date of early termination of the lease agreement. That, two, a termination date we mutually agree that will be outside of the tenancy agreement but will prevent the tenant accumulating additional rent. And that, three, the premises are left in good condition by the tenant. And then the second part of the recommendation, I will take both of these on block, is the committee sets out the principles for inclusion in a policy framework. And I believe if we do approve this, that sets out those principles. Are you happy to propose that? Thank you councillor Brian. Do I have a second please? Oh, Barbara was just slightly quick. All those in favour? Great. Super. Excellent. Thank you all very much for timing that. We then move on to the next item on the agenda which is update on the status of the finance officers' projects. We've moved. We're not reforms anymore, we're projects. Alan, over to you. I've talked enough.
What I've done is on this particular schedule, I've highlighted anything that's changed. You'll see that grey background is what does it. On the VAT, I thought I had a solution for that and I started implementing it and discovered that I haven't. Sometimes I can really make a mountain out of a molehill. And I think in this case I've spent so much time thinking about it that I've actually done it. And I think I've just come up with a much easier way to do it. I'll get advice on it from our consultants who have been advising us on VAT. And if I am right and what I'm proposing makes sense, it will be very easy to implement and to monitor and to get our VAT claims right. In terms of the other ones, the accounting mandate between the GW Standforce and the council, we actually finally had a GW Standforce meeting and the trustees did approve the accounting mandate. Because as a renewal plans, progress has been made. This was a force part of the amenities committee's action plan plans that monitor both committees, which is, which is good. The POS system, the point of sale system, we haven't made as much progress. It's always getting slower. We're just running, we just have a lack of capacity in the finance department. But hopefully that's going to be a dress shop in because we need to, we need to be providing that assurance and that control of all our stock and gilt whole series of stocks. The credit vetting processes I've added on, that came out of the internal control review. And again, this has been one of those things that have settled my, I have a whiteboard next to my desk and it's just one of those tasks that have been there. And then another one that I've just added recently, it's ready to review the rates and utility charges because we have a number of charges. I actually have no idea what they really relate to. And it's to actually mentor down to our properties and our committees so that we have a better idea of what we're actually spending money on and ensuring that if it's supposed to be recharged to someone, that it is. And if it's not, that we are actually budgeting for it in the future class. And that's something that I've just identified based on coming out at our year end and pressing lots and lots of invoices.
Any questions or comments please?
Probably. I think the last part is going to be a traffic light system and green amber and red. The way I'm using brown won't. Can we have it in the fact that it's happening? Does all of this grey mean that they're all amber because they've moved along and the two one ones are green for me?
The two one ones, those changed from the last time. So the idea is to show what's actually changed. So if you took the last schedule or this schedule, you'd see some difference. Otherwise, we've tried to make some progress but we haven't been able to convert everything that's added to green unfortunately.
Any further questions please team? In that case duly noted. Thank you very much Alan. We move on to the next item on the agenda which is correspondence to note and consider. Any other correspondence? Have we had any?
The only correspondence we've had is that the external auditors are reviewing our AGOR information and that they will notice far shortly because they have anything to say. So hopefully that's a good sign. I have nothing to say at the moment. So hopefully that's a good sign, I have nothing to say at the moment.
And then moving on to committee officers' update.
What I just want to do here is just quickly update the committee on, on what has happened. As you're aware, the accounting statements and the governance statement got approved by, by full council. One was at a special meeting of full council and the other one was at the June meeting of full council. What happens is we then have to exercise public rights, we have to put a notice in the notice board where we invite the public to come and inspect the accounting records. And we also disclose the accounting statement part of the AIGO in, in, in the notice board. Our accounts have been subject to internal audit but not to external audit. So the next process is by the status of September, the external auditors have to examine our accounts. They then issue a certificate and if we, we then have to republish the accounting statements again just in case we had to change something for, for external audit purposes. And then the, the regulations don't state how long they should be put in the notice board, but then it ends off the, the financial year and we wait until next year. But it's just to say that, you know, interestingly enough on Facebook, I was reading last night, people saying that, you know, quite critical of the council and how we, you know, we hide everything. And it's quite ironic that we have a notice in our notice board to say that you could exercise your public rights and you can come inspect the accounting records. And it's, it's quite, you know, ironic that we're actually making the points in this particular meeting. And I wish, I wish sometimes we could respond a bit more tighter, but we can't.
And would you like to, you've made reference to your current workload at the moment. Would you like to highlight the progress that we've made on recruitment please?
On Thursday, we've shorted the three that came to be assisted in the finance department. And on Thursday we had interviews scheduled, so hopefully we'll be able to find us who did come from that particular process.
Hopefully that will give you some reassurance that those finance officer projects that were referenced to not having been able to commit time to, will hopefully, once the induction process and training process is underway, will help for renewed figure and focus. We then move on to the final item on the agenda, which is community engagement. Again, we've just covered the AIGO, so the exercising the human, uh, human rights, public rights. I'm not sure that reading a set of accounts is within the human rights, to be fair. And that's me as a bookkeeper. And obviously are we going to, bearing in mind exactly what you've just said, and whilst we only happen to put that on the notice board, does this committee feel that it would be appropriate perhaps to put an electronic version of that out on our Facebook and social media pages, perhaps front page on our website? How do you feel about that?
I would think that may be very sensible.
Yeah.
Steady.
It is on the website because in terms of the regulation to publish that together with other information that doesn't come through the, as through the committee, I think the main thing on Facebook might actually be a very.
And social media channels.
Social media channels, so yes, there are other, social media. And I will certainly do that tomorrow, we will.
Is there anything else that the committee feels we need to engage with the committee on please? In that case, I'll call this meeting to a close. Thank you all very, very much for your time and I'm glad to go put my feet in this.